Following the order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we approve the agenda, there's a couple minor changes. One of them is the date on the agenda is November 14th. It should be November 28th. Number five, I just wanted to mention something briefly that wouldn't be good stuff, but bad stuff. And then down below for the discussion action items, we're just going to move the reviewing the bills and expenditures to the very end so we can put the TAF grant application ahead of that. So is there a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
And this approved. Review of the minutes from November 14th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. Open public comment. Anything open public comment other than what's on the schedule? Meeting done. Does anyone have good stuff? I want to say I think the skating rink looks really clean.
It does, it really does.
I'll lit up. Sorry. Anyone else?
Thanksgiving was great. My favorite holiday.
All right, the bad stuff. I just wanted to mention this because we got a, I got a message this morning regarding someone with a, a homeowner with a dog that has been basically left out in its yard. No one's there anymore. They kind of abandoned the house and the dog's just tied up to a rod. So I just, I don't really care who hears this or whatever. I just find that totally disgraceful and it really bothers me. So Michael and I will go give it water and food after and then we're meeting the sheriff there tomorrow to take the dogs.
Good.
But I just wanted, if you ever see anything like that, please bring it to our attention because we like to take care of those things and it's just, it's bothering other people in the neighborhood because, you know, trying to avoid this.
Thank you for doing that, guys.
Okay. Next up, discussion and action items. We're here to discuss Beaver Pond Path Right-of-Way Agreement discussions and we put this on the agenda just because we've had some questions, concerns, issues rising up over the term of, you know, going through the drawings and through, you know, the process of trying to put the bike path in. So we've invited the homeowners here who have those along the right-of-way and have property that borders where the bike path's going. So whoever, we have invited Judy Tarnovich, Procter Gas, Frank Beatt for Franklin's, and Joel Blumenthal from India. And also, I'm sorry, your name again? Just because you have a little piece.
Oh, that's Vanessa.
Vanessa, okay. Well, you don't have to say.
Yeah.
So, all right. So does anybody want to go first in terms of if they have concerns or questions? We've been, you know, we've been got from everything from having the first drawings approved to having it shifted to different directions, having to redesign the project. Every time we redesign, it costs a ton of money. So I think we're just trying to make sure that we get on the same page with everybody and all the questions are answered so everybody has better understanding as to whether this should go forward or, you know, what the status is right now.
I don't want to go on further.
Okay, thank you.
So I, um, I'm still in favor of the bike path going behind the property. I do have a couple of concerns and, um, I don't know if it's a suggestion or not. When Michael and I walked the property, the initial discussion was five feet that you'd like to, to take from where my fence line is. Sadly, I've just spent $18,000 redoing that fence line because we got broken into three times last year. Actually had to take aggressive measures and put in razor wire because we can't seem to catch anybody. So, so that whole fence line just got redone. The other issue is we have tractor trailers that come through there and make deliveries. And when Michael and I were walking the property, losing five feet from that fence line, my bobtails are parked along the side of the building because they have to be plugged in at night. Have the propane truck, but the diesel trucks have to be plugged in. Plug there. A tractor trailer is going to find it very difficult making that swing around a corner by losing that, that five feet. The other thing that I thought of actually over this weekend is what do the setbacks become? So does that five feet become now eight or 10 feet? Because I can't put the fence line right on the property, you know, the property line that will become the new, I mean, we're going to be tight. I need, I need to have some surveying done to see if I'm going to be able to have that tractor make the swing. There's been discussion about me having a right-of-way through Frank's, but as Lisa and I discussed, and Lisa's my operation manager, we've kind of been running the different scenarios because I'm clearly not going to move a market building, right? So the only option is the fence. What if Frank doesn't own the property anymore? Am I going to lose that right-of-way? What if a tractor trailer is coming through late at night and his fence is locked? Do I have to try and call him and get in there? I'm starting to see a few more complications with the tractor trailers coming through there and not having to go around the building. So I, I need to have somebody come that's more of an expert than I am on what they will need to, to go around that property. And again, I'm willing to, you know, do what I tend to help, but I can't do it at the detriment of the business either. I don't know if there's any possibility of taking a little bit less from my side and if there's, I know it's ledge, but if there's any way of going into the bank or losing a little bit less right there at that one spot where they got to make the corner. Is there a, is there a, you know, regulations to what the size this bike path needs to be all the way through? I have had an electrician come already. Mike and I talked about relocating where the trucks go in and the town possibly doing the, the electrical, relocating the electrical forming. And I have not gotten a bit back on that yet, but I did have the electrician come last week to, to see what would be in tail. It would have to go underground with tractor trailers and bobtails going through. I can't do it over, overhead wire because of sparks. So for safety reasons, we want to go underground. So I am moving forward as far as trying to get the research done, but again, my two biggest concerns was, one, the tractor trailer making the swing without depending on going through Frank's property. And two, will my setbacks actually be? Will I, instead of losing five feet, will I be losing eight to 10 feet? So that's something I kind of need to look at.
So Judy, right now when your trucks come in, they come in like that. It's like, oh, you drive or something, right? But because of the fence being pushed this way, they can't make that cut?
No, they won't be able to. They definitely won't make it with the, with the bobtails where they are. So, so here's the building, right? We park two along the backside where that, where the, we want to move the fence. And then two are parked down along where that retaining wall got put in. So up along the fence and then down the side. And, and because of the way the back part of the property is situated, they right now make a pretty tight turn. They like to swing into that fence right now and down around. And for the most part, the bobtails are out of there, but when they're there, it's a pretty tight turn for them. So if we can relocate the trucks, that'll help. But like I said, I started to get a little concerned about, am I really losing five feet or am I going to lose eight to 10 feet? And that even with the trucks moved might become problematic for that tractor trailer to make, make the swing. Now, I don't know if there's the ability to fill in a little bit more land up back so that they can go up and down. That's another piece that we talked about. But I need to, I need to get somebody that's a little bit more of an expert in that size vehicle trying to make that cut and, and make sure that we can, you know, because then you run into the winter time and snow banks and, right? So I got to make sure that I don't end up with a 40-foot trailer stopped there until March.
So again, why are you, why are you thinking it could be come eight to 10 feet? Are you just concerned?
Because I can't, if you take five feet,
Right.
I can't put that fence line exactly on the line of the property, right? There's, there's setbacks for fencing. So do you take that five feet and then the town says I need another? I don't know that I have to. That was a concern. It's like the, the fence should be set back three feet from my property line that I'm, that I'm losing eight feet or 10 feet or whatever that setback is.
And just so everyone knows, Jenny Austin, who's the project manager, is, is, is joining us remotely. And Jeff from VHB is here as well and they're the project, they're designing the project. So I'm hoping if everything's working correctly, they should be able to kind of jump in and answer some questions that are more technical than what myself or the board might be able to answer.
Do they have an answer?
They are.
Hi, Greg.
Oh. Hey, Jeff.
Yes, I'm here.
Weekend, thanks.
I can answer one question that concerns the fence. Is that, I don't believe we're proposing to move the, move the front rail line five feet and then, and then apply cement to the fencing, you know? The design proposes to just move the fence five feet. And it's, it's supposed to be, actually, it's not going to be because of the easement agreement that I made, but it's not supposed to be permanently moved property line. The town wouldn't be taking the land and fee necessarily to provide an access. So I don't know if the town's setbacks will apply, but we're, we're going to put the fence with this project. We're going to construct a fence five feet offset from where these big fences today.
Does that answer your question? I mean, that's a draw.
Well, he just said he didn't know what the setbacks are. So that's kind of what I want to know is I don't, right? All of us sitting in this room can say, yes, five feet is fine. And 10 years from now, when, you know, he's won the lottery, he's sitting in Florida, we're all retired. I, I don't want to have an issue with the new town board that says, you're, you're too close to the property line. So I want, I want some clarification on.
Well, I would think that would all come up in our agreement.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that could be changed.
Right. And we are going to get there. Since we're, we're taking federal money, there is a very specific process that the town has to follow in order for this project to be completed. And we haven't entered the right-of-way phase yet. And, and the reason for that is because there's a lot of state review that has to happen before we can nail down where a right-of-way is going to happen. You wouldn't want to meet, you wouldn't want me to come to your backyard and say, the town wants to put a trail in, in your backyard somewhere in the next five years. Are you okay with that? And so what we're doing now is, is we've, we've kind of overcome the very long permitting process and we're nearing the right-of-way phase. It seemed to be a lot of miscommunication up to this point and it's one of the reasons why I've invited everyone here. So you have not seen a, a very clear right-of-way plan yet, but they are coming out. But we don't even want to get there if we think that there's going to be an obstacle that's going to shut this thing down.
Yeah, kind of tying to piggyback on what Michael said. So kind of a little bit of background for where we are right now. The first kind of plans that VHB put together called the conceptual plan. And then it was, you know, the torment through the town and D-Trans. And VHB went back and updated plans and added a little bit more detail. And then the second set of plans, what's D-Trans called, the preliminary plan. And those have just recently gone through a D-Trans review process. And we just got comments back from D-Trans last week. So, and kind of another thing that Michael mentioned was in between those two plans, the, the categorical inclusion document, which is for me, but it had to go through potential environmental, cultural, and other resource impacts are. So that was one of the big hurdles that, that Michael was talking about that takes a while to go through the D-Trans process. So now that we have the, the comments of D-Trans for the preliminary plans, the next bit, the next step is to add some more detail in VHB to the process of developing a right-of-way plan. And that's when we'll apply that sort of level of detail for the, for the easements that, that we've been talking about. So we have the OMADA and this, one thing to, to keep in consideration is with each, each excessive plant to mill more detail that's added to the plan. And right now it's kind of the beginning of the, the right-of-way phase where VHB will be starting to pull those together. So I don't think we're going to have all the answers for you tonight, but there's definitely going to be more discussions with, with each of the property owners. So after the, the right-of-way plans and easements are developed, it's when there'll be more discussions in terms of, you know, kind of fine, fine tuning those specific details, you know, five, six, five feet, six feet, what, what that comes out to be will be developed very soon. And Michael has mentioned the, that you had talked about when we had a conference call earlier this month with D-Trans and kind of let them know that that's a concern with the, you know, potential for, you know, the power issue for the truck. So Michael, so it's keeping us in the loop of, of these issues as they come up so we can anticipate how to handle them as we go through the right-of-way phase.
Could you also address Judy's question about rather than going into her property and going away from her property, like cutting into the, you know, the edge of the woodland there? Is that a possibility or?
It's not. So we did, we did look at it earlier, the original wind. There is a lot of ledge, obviously in the mountainside that we were concerned about. And also wanted to make sure we had enough room for upper drainage between the path and the mountain by having a, a frequent washout during bigger storms up the path. We have skinned up the path as much as we can so that the state guidance says, you know, a path like this should be 10 feet minimum during normal conditions. And when constrained, it would have to be eight feet. So the path is eight feet wide all along the back of the Procter Gas parcel, which is the minimum that we're allowed to go. We, we could explore an option that would shift the map towards the hill. I can tell you it'll be more expensive as we're getting into a lot more blasting of the hillside as we, you know, try to establish that path further into the hill.
Okay, thank you. Judy, do you have anything else you want to add?
No. So I think that was, I'm going to go with Joe.
What's up next, right?
The only thing that, let's say I've always had Judy be able to open your gate and push the snow off of my lawn because of the winter time. Doesn't bother me. And I know we talked about putting the gate there for her too. And when I, well, we're getting ready to retire. Within a year, we'd like to sell the restaurant. I'd like to sell Coryland with it if possible. If not, I'll beat Coryland. But, you know, within a year, we'd like to sell. And I understand her concerns because, you know, we're not going to be there. Our agreement's fine, you know, tangential agreement. We're doing with it, but, you know, that's personal, not mine. And I understand the concerns that way. As far as the backend, okay, yeah, that takes, that's tunnel land and my land for healthy 100 feet on the back, maybe a little more. And that's, to me is, that can be done because that's not a, that anything will ever be done. So if they can, they can scoot it as far back as they can to take whatever they, that, that's, doesn't bother me. My only other concern is also is, I know you said you got to put a fence on it. Again, we never talked full-size. Is it going to look like the Amtrak's in Black Metal? I love that because that would match my gate. But, you know, I, you know, what is it going to look like? I just don't want four foot chain link to go. That's not a, that's not.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Jeff and Jenny could hear. Frank's concerns were about what his fence would look like, the height and color. And then, and then there was, there was, again, there was some questions about access if he would sell the property, whether a tractor trailer. And I know that's not really a technical, a technical question. It's just kind of a concern. And then from what I've seen on the plate, it is a six-foot high fence.
I'd agree with it. We'd let, you know, if they can't for some reason go around their building, I told them just open the gate. My gate's not locked. Just open the gate and drive through. That's what I said. But, but like they said, I'm not, I'm with them all.
And then, and then I have been working with the engineers a good bit on solving the stone line ditch issue because I know that was brought up at the last meeting.
That would hinder the property.
And so Jeff, you can probably speak more towards that since you sent me the email today about the, the ditch work, if you don't mind.
Yeah. You know, the state design guidance often tells engineers maybe what treat the ditches with materials based on the longitudinal slope of the ditch, though a very steep ditch often needs stone fill to prevent erosion issues. And very flat ditches do not, it could be a solid surface for grass. That guidance is a bit simplistic and we were able to take closer proof of that and just look at some of the ideological activity that we would expect in the ditch that we have shown. And we were able to find out that stone fill really isn't necessary for what we're dealing with. There's probably just not going to be that much water flowing in the ditch. So even though the, the longitudinal range, the longitudinal slopes of that ditch, you would normally say make a stone fill ditch. We were happy to find out that that's really not required from a erosion prevention perspective. So we are going to move forward taking a stone fill out of the ditch. In that, in that particular situation, that, that's true for the property that you're, that you're talking about, right? There is some stone line ditch up on Procter Gas that, that would require a stone, stone fill. So much bigger watershed that goes to that area.
Right now it's all grass and we don't have a problem. I'm mowing and nothing, everything's staying tight. So, you know, that's, that's what I was hoping to continue doing because I just don't want to see another tree. I spent four years clearing that lot. I don't want to see another tree again.
Go.
I'm just speaking as landowner representative for Omea. Initially supported the project. We've seen drawings now. Have a couple minor concerns where the trailer pathway seems to be oblique or at an angle to the, I could call it the entrances or the access to the property. Where we have sort of a roadway on the west end, sort of a bit of a diffuse roadway on the east end. So, you know, with time, maybe we could make some modification or have some discussion around that. I'm assuming there's no fencing involved on the Omea piece. I don't see why there would be. And the last little piece I'm, I'm concerned about is it's, it's enough to maintain the, the structure as it is. And I know the backside of the building isn't the most pleasant to look at. And if that's where we choose to put the pathway, so be it. I can't guarantee a commitment to spruce up the back of the building. You know, it's just, it is what it is. It's a large facility and it's, it's old, so.
Maybe the front of the building?
Yeah. We have done things to the front and we just have a roof problem down at the far end. You don't see everything.
It's not bad.
Well, it's, I haven't seen it. And so eventually, when we get to the right point, I need to push it up to regional executive approval and just sell. Sell.
And can you go outside with anything?
Can I just ask a question as a taxpayer rather than just a landlord? What's, what are we looking at? Do you have any idea what the maintenance on this trail is going to be for the taxpayers down the road? I mean, I know, I know most of it's going to come from grant money to start it, but then there's maintenance. Is it, is it going to be paved by the path as it goes through? Is that what it is or, you know? So is it a year round? Is it going to be plowed? Is it going to be leaved in? Is it going to be policed in any way? Because, I mean, yeah, the mammals don't hide anymore. They're just near anywhere and everywhere these days. So, you know, with that allowing more access to the town. I want to talk about that as well. That was another concern of mine.
So it, it wouldn't be plowed in the winter time and, and a lot of that reason is so snowmobilers can still utilize that makeshift trail that's there now to still access businesses and property. And then we've got three highway crew members now. It would just, I don't have a, a number figure and I'm sure you knew I wouldn't, but.
No, I'm sure.
Yeah. So I don't have a figure, but it, it would just fall under their regular maintenance duty.
Just for the record, that is a state stone fill trail right now, right to my door.
Oh, is it?
That, that's a vast trail right through, right through, right to me. Because it's one of the only places where you can get on a trail and go and get food.
So you think they have an easement going through there? I'm only asking because it would probably be important.
It's a, it's a vast trail. I don't know to ease it, how that works.
Typically, it's like, can I, you know, vast trails are landowner agreements that are maintained on an annual basis. So they're not necessarily right-of-way, it's just.
Ours is pretty poor.
One minor thing, adding principal material would be an aggregate path to the west of North Street into the east of that would be a path. And that, that kind of goes back to the initial scoping study in terms of where, where those came from.
Jenny, say that again. Where would the gravel? So if you were heading on the path from downtown, where would the gravel start?
So just west of the, the North Street intersection, the Market Street, North Street, Main Street, High Street intersection. West of there is Aggregates. And then from Electric Avenue to North Street is Dave.
So it's aggregate all the way from there to the pond? From Frank's to the pond?
Yeah. So it starts with Cory.
Can you remind us all the length of the trail that we're spinning this one year?
I don't know if you guys heard that, but Lisa Meiser was asking for a length of the trail.
Oh, total is, I think it's a half mile combined. The quarter mile three section is about. From start to finish, half a mile.
And how much money do we have invested?
I don't have an exact figure. I gave them a couple meetings ago and they haven't changed much since then.
Any of these changes will be the responsibility of the town?
So I provided a handout to the board, which was provided by the Boys and King, Jenny Austin, who is with us now. And it does show a, I mean, this is, this is a ballpark estimate on how much it would cost if they're. cost if there, if there needed to be a redesign. And we're looking at between fifteen and thirty-three thousand. We're also pushing the project out another two years.
And that doesn't include if we had to take on the relocation of Electric? Is that incorporated in that estimate?
I don't think so. No. Because I was gonna ask it after the fact.
And the initial cost for this was what, right at half a million dollars?
The town's share was around a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
The initial cost for the project?
The total cost. Jenny, do you have that number? I might have it somewhere, but.
What was the question again? The total project cost?
The total project cost.
I want to look up the number, I believe. The grant of the state is six hundred and twenty thousand. That includes engineering, construction, resident engineering. Just a look at the numbers. There is, there are a couple of construction costs that are non-participating. The total match is a little bit higher than, so in general, for eligible expenses, the town local cost is forty percent. A couple items that are considered non-participating by state and those are a little bit additional to that, to that number. But the total grant is six hundred and twenty thousand, et cetera.
For half a mile.
But isn't also the fact that if we entered into this grant, accept the grant, that we're liable for whether we put this path in or not? If we stop now?
If the, if the town ended up not being instructed, then kind of with actual payback, the town will be reimbursed from the state's base. If the project ends, the problem is watered.
The amount that we've used thus far, which is what?
It's like thirty something thousand.
No, well, the town has paid twenty or thirty thousand, but the federal match has paid over a hundred thousand. So we would have to pay that back as well. Because that's already been reimbursed to the town.
So at this point, you're kind of foolish to stop the project because we'd be paying back and have nothing to show for it. For the same amount of time.
I guess we just wanna sprinkle the gold flaps in and out of the gap.
And so the latest statement from B-Trans that we got dated October twenty first, October twenty first, the total expenditures to date was a hundred and four thousand. So eighty percent of that is what's been reimbursed back to the town.
I guess my concern is that, I mean, I'd love to see it go through and have everybody happy with, you know, the end result. But my concern is that we won't move forward and just as this has lagged on for so many years already and gotten nowhere, that we're gonna keep continuing that process for two or three more years. Prices are gonna escalate and by the time we get to a final where we show the landowners what they've asked for and what we think we're gonna get, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a margin between the thoughts and the ideas. And it'll never come to fruition again then. I just feel like the communication's been poor from day one. And we just keep, you know, we keep analyzing, we keep looking at drawings, we keep, and there's never a shovel on the ground. And I feel like we just keep putting more money in. And I don't want to lose a hundred thousand, you know, that had been matched. But by the same token, I don't want to wait a year and come to these people with drawings and say, this is what we want, and they can't agree to it. And then we're stuck a year out and further in the hole.
Yeah, I'm actually getting ahead of everyone. We're not at the right away phase. So I, you know, I was kind of instructed, don't push as hard as you are because I would like to see this project happen way before 2025 or even 2024. I'm very motivated to seeing it happen. And it's why I've been working so closely with landowners. I'm not wa, I don't, I don't know why this didn't happen in the scoping study. I don't know why this didn't happen at the beginning of the project. So I would, I would agree with Judy. It is unfortunate that we're here at this moment. We have to make a decision here pretty soon on how to move forward. It sounds, it sounds like there's some minor concerns from landowners at this point that, that we could probably work with. If that statement's true, I'll be sending letters out, hopefully entering into negotiations with you all. But we need to be all on the same page. Because as Judy said, I don't think we have been for the last four years.
I guess who does the answer come from in terms of how quickly can we turn around something that's actually concrete to present to the homeowners, landowners, so we can get a better idea if there's actual buying? How quickly can we turn that around? So I feel like every time we, you know, we stop this conversation, things have changed again. And I get their frustration with, you know, we're at five feet, now we have ten feet and we still don't get straight answers. So I guess I'm looking for how soon can we have something that's actually in front of them that we can all agree to or disagree to, but at least it's not gonna change from that point in time.
I've asked for the vote on the electric. I need to get somebody, and I'm not sure who that is. I'm right now thinking of the gentleman that runs the trucking school at Stafford, to have him come and say, can we turn a semi around in this area? Those are my two answers that I need to get for you guys as far as the property goes. I don't want to stop the project if we can physically make it happen. Because I need to take Frank out of the equation because I don't know what's gonna happen with that property, you know? So I need to get those two answers. As soon as I have those two answers, I can come back to you with a more concrete answer. I wish as a taxpayer that we'd had a roundtable discussion and gotten a lot more answers before the town itself spent any money. Because you're right, we're kind of, you know, it's gonna cost as much to go back as it is to go forward for us at this point. So which direction are we going? We kind of should have had these answers before we spent a hundred thousand dollars.
Lisa? So at the last meeting, Michael said that we were allocating ARPA money to pay for this, but that was before we anticipated there were gonna be additional expenditures. Where would those funds be coming from?
I think just for clarification, I'm advocating for the town to use ARPA funds on this just because we're not budgeting for it. The select board's not made a decision on ARPA funds yet. And that's the portion of the question I'll answer.
And where's the additional funding coming from? So if, if Judy got her, and I obviously, I think the electrical part is the most minor part because, you know, you know you can get that done, you know, you know, take care of it. I mean, but if all your facilities are in place and you're okay with the project, then Omea seems like you just need a blessing from corporate.
The latest PDF drawing, just some red lines on it showing the intent that I was describing. Not re-engineered, it's all flat ground. But just showing the modifications, you know, that's, that's a handshake and that, that could work.
And then Frank? If Judy takes you out of her equation, then.
I've already, I said it the last time, I'm looking for it.
So nobody answered my question as far as who would get, what?
When is this gonna happen?
Yeah. And is that on you guys, on B-Trans? Is that on?
Most likely, I think, our public net. So we got our feedback from B-Trans, um, there are kinds. My quick review that did seem to be concerning, but it should be a quick turnaround to get draft right away plans back to, back to the B-Trans court. And Jenny, we have to, currently I'm on the way back. I think their review is three or four weeks on these plans, is that true?
Yes, it's typically about that. And these things, we have the concerns about the schedule and typically what we'll do is we'll help the town plan prior to B-Trans review. But B-Trans actually gave us the go-ahead during preliminary plans. So we actually conducted our review of the plans on behalf of the town at the same time as B-Trans. So they're well aware of the schedule concern. So I think that's, that's probably a good timeline, I think, for the initial timeframe pattern.
Yeah, I mean, we start, we have a meeting with Peter next Wednesday. I think it's a very reasonable timeline to get draft right away plans ready for that meeting. So if we flip through those again, back to get, I still have any early plans that I have and then start there, we'll be processed by the end of the week. I think that's all a very reasonable timeline. Just depends on how soon we get coverage back from that, on the right away plans and the nature of those comments, where we can then start anything over to the property owners and start those discussions.
Yeah, there might also be a few of the preliminary plan review, you know, some comments from B-Trans, but it seemed like those were, were pretty wider, but those will not get to the plan.
And it seems to concern, I think, all the people for right away.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Someone on the screen has his hand up.
Oh, that's Phil. Hello, can I speak?
Yes, you have a question?
Yeah. Seems to me like if you spend a hundred thousand dollars on a half mile trail and don't get anything done, then why proceed and spend maybe another few hundred thousand dollars and have to pay all this money? The select board feels this strongly about the conviction that it'd be nice to see the select board step up and, you know, as a person on the clipboard, give a couple hundred thousand dollars for this themselves. Since there's a lot of people running away like this. Things are ridiculous. So that's just, you know, as a taxpayer, that's what I'm seeing and I appreciate it. Thank you.
May I have a comment?
Where's the money gonna come from coming forward? Where's the budget?
Well, Phil, I think first of all, you misunderstood in terms of the one hundred thousand. I said part of it was that by the time we were done, we didn't spend that much in the end. If we pull out right now, then we still owe that hundred thousand that the government has put in for the grant. So we'd be in the hole a hundred and twenty, thirty thousand dollars with no bike path, or we move forward, have a bike path for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I'll believe that, I'll believe that we have a bike path when I, when I see the bike path because this hasn't been going very well. I'd like to just get rid of this engineering team. This has all, all been a big mess since it started. And it would be good to have people that can really just point and shoot and get us in the right direction.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'll just head off here. I don't want to be Mr. Negative. But thank you for letting me speak.
I'll invite you to the ribbon cutting.
Okay, great. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and we're throwing around some pretty loose numbers on, on, on what would have to be paid back. So if anybody does want something more definite, you can reach out to me and I can get it to you.
So is everyone okay waiting to hear once they meet with B-Trans and get kind of more solidified with the plans and when the right away information's coming out? And then we'll make sure we circle you guys all back into deep part of the conversation?
Can I ask that we, that Michael can get like a monthly update from them and do it just like the delinquency report, you know? What step are we on right now? How much longer do we think it's gonna take? So that we kind of, because I think we kind of forget about it every once in a while and then all of a sudden it pops up again. So let's, let's, going forward, do that, please.
I can do that. And, you know, just to add to that, a couple months ago, the team here that you're seeing in front of you, me, Jeff, Jenny, and Peter Bishop from the state, who's doing all these reviews, who isn't here, we, we decided to hold monthly meetings just so that we could all be in the loop on how we were gonna move forward, especially with my very aggressive timeline being proposed. So, yeah, I have no problem providing a more formal report to the board so everyone knows where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
Always a lot of fun.
I have my dog waiting in the car.
I'll take care of your dog, Judy.
That's right.
Judy, I heard there's a dog left in the car.
Next up is the second round of the general fund fiscal twenty-four budget review. And we have Carrie coming on the phone, Ernie Creed, Mark Shea, Randy DePron, and Joshua for product.
Yeah, and I've invited Carrie here, who's the RCWSD, which is the Rutland County Solid Waste District rep. And then Mark Shea is also here. And I'm not a hundred percent sure of his title, but I know he's really important with the RCSWD. So they, they're gonna, they're gonna provide us some information so that, so that the board can make informed decisions on the budget because one of the largest items on it is curbside. And Randy DePron is also here and he is a representative with Casella. He knows a lot about the local, state, and he knows a lot about the micro and macroeconomics of garbage, of refuse collection. We can start with, now, Mark and Carrie, I invited you both here specifically to tell us a little bit about the Rutland County Solid Waste District permits and, and what a normal person would have to do to deliver trash to the Gleason Transfer Station.
So do you want to go first? Carrie or Mark? Well, Mark, you can talk about the Gleason Road Park and what the town pays to the district and what we get out of that. And then I can cover the questions after that. I think I've said a few questions and some of the questions I do do want to know. And we have talked about permits and what's required from a town resident in the past. So I'll go ahead and let Mark take the deal on what we get out of being part of the Solid
Oh, I think you're on mute.
You're muted, Mark.
Basically, some of the questions that you asked for, Mr. Manager, is what does it cost for this, the town to be a member? You're already a member, it doesn't cost you anything. You are part of the district. It doesn't cost you one penny. If someone wanted to visit the transfer station, we're not giving too much because Carrie's gonna talk about it. For residents, fifteen dollars. You go online and you fill in your personal information, your vehicle information, and your permit will be emailed to you within a minute. Show, come to, come to the transfer station seven three, Monday through Saturday. And you have disposal in the clear ways.
Mark, I recently was looking for a permit and was told it costs sixty dollars.
Do you wish to go?
I recently applied for a permit and I was told it would cost sixty dollars plus my disposal cost when I went to the transfer station.
Are you a business clerk? Would you be considered a business or a residential family household?
Mr. Residents.
Just a residential one is thirty dollars.
It's fifteen, you think?
Oh, excuse me, residential is fifteen dollars.
Okay, well, your, your, your office told me it was sixty. And I had to apply online. I couldn't do it through the town clerk.
No, online is quick. I don't think I've ever had anything over sixty dollars, and that's a big truckload.
But if you were just like a resident with a gar, couple garbage bags, you'd probably get all in the bins there, right?
No, you, you would go through and you weigh, generally don't.
Or maybe I have to go to recyclables.
Yeah, you can go to the, for residential, so you've got the, the, the recycle drop off, that's where you go, right?
Yeah.
And you have the electronics, you have food waste, you have the plastics, you drop your bags off there or you recycle, if you have the permit, there's no charge for recycling.
You aren't going in for that.
Yeah, and to get, I'm still going on a price list, I'm paying sixty dollars.
That's a lot.
If you are a non-district person, say you're coming from Manchester or someplace in New York, yeah, you'd be charging on a district permit, and it would be sixty dollars. If you were a business coming from Manchester or New York, it would be ninety dollars. These pricing schemes are created to benefit district members such as yourself, to keep the price as low as it can be, which is fifteen dollars. There's no, I have no projection of this increase in this year, despite of all the economic turmoil that we've run through over the last three years. And so that's a good price. If, this also logic to the age of the new recycling, and, anybody else?
Does anyone have any questions?
Michael, I think so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right, well, the questions, I guess, we're good with your information, thank you. Okay, so...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
All right. So, want to fire?
Or do we?
Or are we, is anybody on?
I think, did you have a question for?
Oh, you did.
After the email, I don't have any more. I mean, that email was very thorough, so...
Randy, can you hear us all right?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. You and I spoke offline today a little bit about recycling, and you brought up Act 148. Can you just highlight that a little bit so that the board can make an informed decision about refuse and recycling pickup combined?
Sure. So, in 2015, the state of Vermont passed a law, Act 148, which is a universal recycling law, which requires all haulers to offer recycling with waste services. So, we cannot provide service to a residential customer or a commercial customer and not offer recycling service. So, with your town-wide program, the ability for the town to not provide recycling service would probably be against the Act 148 law that was enacted by the state in 2015.
Can I ask a question? I know that we're charged basically for service and then for the tonnage in both garbage and recyclables. Is, normally, we, we love, we want people to just throw garbage away and not, you know, furniture and across the limits, but a lot of them put that out by their garbage. So if Casella does decide to pick those things up, we're charged for those, correct? Because of the tonnage?
The way the contract was originally set up almost, well, twelve years ago, is that we will not pick up anything outside of a sixty-four gallon cart unless it's in a town of Proctor designated bag that residents can purchase from the town office. So the only thing we're going to pick up is what's in the sixty-four gallon trash container at each stop. If there's additional things outside of that container, we will not pick those up unless they're in the bag that the residents should buy from the town office.
Your drivers aren't aware of this.
Most of them are, but...
No, they're not. No, they're not. Happens every, every week. I, I don't understand why you would buy an armed truck, and your operator not picking up, you know, loose garbage and putting it in.
Sorry, I didn't understand that question.
He didn't understand your question, huh?
Yeah, I'm sure he didn't.
What happens, I see a lot of people who put out cardboard boxes crushed, but in between the two bins, like, because they don't fit in the big bins, is that still takeable, recycling items?
Um...
As I did myself, they don't fit in that, you know, bucket.
So obviously, obviously, everybody's trying to service the town as best they can, if things are recycling is outside the, and they're going to do their best to make sure they did everything else, and stop.
They usually do, I'm just curious if that would concern you.
And then I just have one more question, and maybe you can't answer this, I don't know, but I know in your agreement, we're charged a monthly fee for both garbage and recyclables, and on top of that, we're charged a tonnage for both of those services as well. Is that number, the regular monthly payment, is that figured on residents, like, number of residents, you know, per charge included in that? Is that the diesel charges as well? Or is that just a figure that's kind of drawn up based on, you know, how we're serviced over the year of the contract?
Yeah, so, the trash is picked up weekly, and your recycling's picked up every other week, so the every other week service fee is a bit less. And based on, based on the number of containers that are at each residence, that, that number will change as new houses are built, obviously, or whatever other factors. So, the per tonnage is based on current market conditions for the recycling, and the trash rate is obviously based on the current rate plus any CPI increases each year.
Okay, so just as an example, say we have seven hundred homes in Proctor, the contract's not based on those seven hundred homes, it's based still on the usage of what you picked up each week, kind of?
No, you have seven hundred nine hundred homes, that's what you're charged for.
Even though some of those homes may never put garbage out, or may put it out once a week only?
Yeah, that's correct.
Once, I mean, like, once, because we have a lot of people that don't live in their homes sometime, so we're just being charged even if they may put garbage out once a year.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And again, as I, in my conversation with Michael today, you know, the average cost of service for each one of your residents is twenty dollars a month compared to what we charge people that just sign up for our service at other towns is extremely reasonable.
But we're billed the tonnage on top of that, right?
I look at the twelve-month average of your total costs for the last twelve months, and each resident's cost was twenty dollars per month.
Okay, just to ask the question again, we pay twenty dollars plus the tonnage?
No, twenty dollars includes the tonnage.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I couldn't be there in person, I have a serious bug and do not feel well, but if you have any more questions, obviously, I'd be happy to show up and remember me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you feel better.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Very.
Okay. All right. So can we move on to fire?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go over to the fire.
And I've invited Josh Webb here, we spoke after the meeting, I think there's a little bit of confusion on, on what the goals of, of the visits from the fire department were, and Chief Webb is just here to clear some of that up and seek guidance from the board.
So, last time we came, it was more the informative than to push an actual sale. The actual sale orders were just there to give you an idea of what the respective trucks are going for in the race, and what we would like to see, but we also need the board's consensus of how they link us through, go forward. I can't ask five different reps to come in and bid two different trucks, it's just not a realistic thing for a rep to do. So if we decide that the board wishes us to continue to pursue a version chassis truck, we don't have a problem with that, we need to know that going forward. That was kind of the whole purpose of what we brought, and why we brought the specs to show the differences in these trucks.
So you're asking us to say yes, go up and get bids for a chassis, or yes, go up and get bids for a commercial customer?
Oh, I see, okay. Oh, okay. Because the prices that are provided were an unsolicited bid, it was just to show the cost of what these differences were.
Right. Does anybody have any?
I cleared up some of the confusion.
But, I mean, do you have a preference as to if we go up for a bid for the chassis or, and, and I mean, I know what, I know you guys cover a lot, and I, I kind of checked into a lot too, because that's what I like to do. And I know, I mean, even the chassis, I know it was explained that, you know, they're not as safe probably as a custom-made, but they all have to pass the same inspection, so...
It's also up to the driver driving the truck, who should be driving responsibly to begin with.
Exactly. So, you know, a chassis, a hundred thousand dollars cheaper or whatever, same amount of safety mechanisms put into it as a custom-made one, so...
And the manufacturers still will order the commercial chassis based upon the weight of the design of the truck.
Right.
Hence why E1 went to a M112 chassis, it was designed to carry the weight of eighteen hundred gallons of water, tryside dump, all the hoes that we need to have on it, instead of a lesser sized chassis.
Right.
So it sounds like, in my opinion, we should probably look at the commercial chassis, which would be the cheaper option.
Okay.
If it, if it provides the same safety, which it's something it does.
Do you actually have, like, two or three vendors you could get?
I could probably get a lot of them, Mark.
Okay.
The reps are very hot after summer break.
Okay.
Because they're having record years.
Right.
Hence the unfortunate length of turnaround.
Right.
Yeah.
And the turnaround time's still about the same.
Well, vendor, vendor may vary months, but you're, you're only going to be there in months.
Yeah, okay. All right. So is there a motion to go out for the chassis for bid? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. You're approved.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
Have a good night. Or you can stay.
I'm going to stay.
All right. Okay, so, next up, we're going to go over to the top grant application for the Proctor Restaurant and Pittsburgh Trail System Scoping Study.
This might not have been, like, to bring that up.
Yeah, I know.
The only reason it is, is because there, there is a pretty tight timeline on it. The Planning Commission has, has discussed it, and the majority support the application. I've spoken to the, the town manager in West Rutland and the town manager in Pittsburgh, and the town managers support it, which, you know, doesn't really mean much, but they believe that their boards will support the tri-town, a tri-town trail network as, as they did a couple of years ago. So, we have, we have quite a few members of the Planning Commission here to, to speak about this, and I think that should cover it. I can go over quickly, just kind of my memo to you, but the, the scoping study, the estimates of that are around fifty thousand. It would be a twenty percent match from towns, and this information has come from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, who has informally agreed to help us submit an application. The, the twenty percent would be split three ways between the towns, so if these numbers were perfectly correct, you're looking at the town of Proctor spending thirty-three hundred dollars on a scoping study annually in our operational budget. The Planning Commission has two thousand dollars set aside for grant applications, plus two thousand dollars set aside for economic development. So if this were all to happen, if this invoice were to come once in one fiscal year, the town would have enough money to fund a scoping study.
What do we get from this? How does this benefit the town? Just my question.
I think you'd probably have to look at the social cost of it. You know, you're, you're providing an outlet for people to recreate outside. I, I know, just from talking to different residents, it's, it seems that Proctor's economic development drive is centered around outdoor recreation. So I think I'm in line with both the municipal plan and both feedback from our, our more involved residents. I can't put a hard number on it, though.
So the scoping study would be, maybe I was confused, but it sounded like you said we put money aside for the scoping study each year?
No, the scoping study...
It's done one year.
If, if the scoping study's done in one year, it can be paid for with what is allocated in the budget.
Okay, and then the funding for the actual trail?
For the actual trail, we're not even there yet. It's, the scoping study is just to look at the feasibility of a trail network.
Okay.
Could we get to West Rutland? If we could, how would that happen? Can we get to Pittsburgh? If we can, how would that happen? In... plus $2,000 set aside for economic development. So if this were all to happen, if this invoice were to come once in one fiscal year, the town would have enough money to fund a scoping study.
What do we get from this? How does this benefit the town? Just my question.
I think you'd probably have to look at the social cost of it. You know, you're, you're providing an outlet for people to recreate outside. I, I know just from talking to different residents, it's, it seems that Proctor's economic development drive is centered around outdoor recreation. So I think I'm in line with both the municipal plan and both feedback from our, our more involved residents. I can't put a hard number on it, though.
So the scoping study would be, maybe I was confused, but it sounded like you said we put money aside for the scoping study each year?
No, the scoping study.
Only done one year?
If, if the scoping study's done in one year, it can be paid for with what is allocated in the budget.
Okay, and then the funding for the actual trail?
For the actual trail. We're not even there yet. It's, the scoping study is just to look at the feasibility of a trail network. Could we get to West Rutland? If we could, how would that happen? Can we get to Pittsburgh? If we can, how would that happen? In, in a excellent feasibility study, the engineers would come here and they would talk about what the needs are of the town. And the planning commission did place an emphasis on right-of-ways and permitting. So different trails would be shown on the scoping study. You know, you'd have one that would be ADA compliant. You know, you've got an old rail bed that, that does go along. And I'm not saying that's where it would go. But you do have an old rail bed that goes along West Main Street. That could be a potential path for, that allows for, you know, that is ADA compliant because it's flat and it's wide. But then would you look at maybe also, would a better option be a more like goat path? I don't like to use the term goat path, but a cycling path or something like that that could go over the mountain. So it's just presenting to you different options for a future project.
So does anyone here want to speak? Favor, how about, or against it, or share your information? Go ahead.
Despite the name of this topic, I'm not going to tap dance for you all. Dale Christie, for the viewers at home. I would definitely like to support, I mean, we've already talked about, I, I'm part of the planning commission, so we did discuss that fairly extensively. And the majority did approve it. It wasn't unanimous, full disclosure. But we did have a majority in favor of this. That's the planning side of me. Now, as a resident, I would like to support it because I think it is a very common trend for state, you know, communities in Vermont to offer more recreation. It seems to be attracting more out-of-staters. And it also is good benefit for the residents' health and happiness. And I know we're all a little gun-shy about paths right now because of the Beaver Pond project. Things like that could go, happen again. And I certainly am no position to promise it would go smoother. And I'm, you know, always an optimist. So I would like to say it would go great. One reason I would feel more confident about future projects going well is Pittsburgh and West Rutland would be involved. If you're familiar with them, they have really good trail networks already. And with their experience, I think they would be good partners in moving forward with the project. So that would give me confidence. And I think if there's ever any hope of or desire to add recreational paths in this town, we should do the scoping study now. Because as you see, everything goes up and up in price. And having this document, even if we don't act in the next five years, will be a document that we can rely on, you know, with some value. And for $3,300 or whatever it was, I think is a heck of a value. And we'll have that in the bank for any future projects. I think there's a fair number of options for paths connecting the communities. Michael talked about the path going south towards West Rutland. The same old rail bed could be used going north. But again, there's lots of other options. So I think this trail study scoping project would be worth doing because it's the normal process. I mean, there's always ways around these scoping studies. And, and we all always get ambitious about doing our things ourselves and saving money. We're Vermonters, we're, we're, we're frugal. We can take on and do things ourself. But the scoping study process is a common process for getting large projects done. And it is easier for things later when, when you're involving lawyers. Because right-of-ways and property boundaries always require lawyers. And I think the scoping study will help make that easier. So from my experience, the scoping study would have a great value. And if there's any interest in adding recreational paths in the future, we should do this study now. And I think rambling is all I've got for you. But my passion speech is just basically saying I, I would love to see this done as a resident. And, and I don't think there's always a lot of people showing up. But if, in spirit, I think there's a lot of people in this town that would also like this project. And paths like the Carriage Trail and, and the trails at Beaver Pond that are on town property, they're hea-, they're heavily being used. And I think those are fine examples of that there's a lot of other residents that would also like further trails and expansion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Anybody else want to?
Quickly, I'm the planning commission, Carol Kordvansky. And I am encouraged by what Dale has to say because I'm fairly new to the process. And it just seems like it's very encouraging to hear two other towns are going to, you know, get going. It's my belief, I think, Michael, you said it's good for 10 years? If we did this study, is it something like that?
You know, I, I just think anytime you're going to go to apply for a grant in the future, a scoping study is going to set you up for success there.
That's right. It eliminates a lot of what happened previously tonight about land.
Or, or even if a private investor wanted to approach us about it. If you've already, if the town has already done the footwork, I think it's going to be a lot encouraging for whether it's the state or private individual to invest.
And who's to say we wouldn't feel a little differently once the study is done? That's the purpose of it, you know? We can see natives and whatever. But I think it's certainly a good idea to do it now and give it a try.
If I may, one more thing. Another reason I would feel confident about this project is not only do we have potentially two towns with great experience, we are, we wouldn't be doing alone because it'd be involvement from Pineapple Partnership, which Shelley represents, that would be a great asset because they are very experienced in trail building. Grants, getting other volunteer entities to work and help out. So I think, unlike the Beaver Pond project, I think we'd have a lot of great partners involved in making it successful.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or?
The money for that scoping study, I think, is more than worth.
The fact that it's available. You know, we don't have to raise the money somewhere.
Right.
Right.
All right. So Jake, didn't we do some kind of study on the rail bed, a bike pad, when Mr. DeShello was on board?
That's before my time. I have no idea.
I think it was discussed, but I don't know if it was a study.
Why didn't that go forward?
Because of property owners.
Okay, well, I mean, we're certainly going to look at other options.
Well, I'm just saying.
We're not locked in.
If, if there's, if there's, that proposal was done, why wouldn't that have some feasibility also?
Well, I'm sure they'll look at it, you know?
Okay, I'm just asking because I didn't hear about it this evening. We were talking about a scoping proposal having a 10-year life. So I thought I heard that and we'll be discussing.
Oh, I, I think it could have a 20-year life. I mean, if you've got, if you've got paths that have been laid out on a scoping study, I, I mean, it opens, I mean, they're, the land might change owners and then you'd have to revisit right-of-ways. But at least you have an idea of what it would look like.
All right, is there a motion to support a tri-town trail scoping study?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Shelley.
Yes, thank you.
Carriage Trail is excellent, you know? It's used by a lot of people. It's a, it's a nice thing.
Yeah, if you guys, this is past my bedtime. Even though Michael's going to invite me to stay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And if you guys have questions, Michael knows how to get ahold of me.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Yep.
Next up is review bills and expenses. Everybody signed those, right?
Yes.
All right.
Take care, I'll catch up with you later. So we had a very busy meeting. I changed the agenda around a little bit. So we're, we've got Board of Water Commissioners and Board of Sewer Commissioners down at the bottom. I've also kind of condensed all the reports into one review item. Real quickly, I've been, I've been moving papers around a whole lot since I've sat down. But, but you've got my manager's report there, packets. It'll most likely be reflected in minutes. Oh, here we go, sorry. But I'll, I'll highlight just a few things. I, I have been putting a, a great deal of effort into, into the Beaver Pond path coordination. We did have our first snowstorm. We got to work out some of the kings. That's what those are for. Thankfully, it was a light one. Well, it was a heavy one. It was a heavy snow.
Yeah.
But we got to kind of test the equipment. And we've got a new foreman, so we got, kind of got to test his leadership skills and overall the feedback from residents. Well, I got some poor feedback, some negative feedback. But it was, it was taken care of pretty quickly. And then annual reports have been requested from individual stakeholders. And I provided an ARPA funding suggestion spreadsheet there for you. It's just something to look at. Gives you an idea of how much we have, what kind of projects we've got going on. Since my meeting with GMP and Efficiency Vermont, this is just my advice. But it does seem that the town will save money by replacing the light fixtures on the bridge. It was expensive. We didn't go out for bid. We just got an estimate from patch. Efficiency Vermont suggested that we do go out for bids to, to, to see if we can get a better price. And, you know, it's, it's an infrastructure upgrade. It'll save money over time. It's better for the environment. So I thought, you know, I've added that into my suggestion for ARPA funding.
I would like to say this is a great idea. Those streetlights are not on our streetlight plan with Green Mountain Power. Those, those are metered separately. And we have three lights out on the bridge right now, three bulbs out. So to, to replace three bulbs with what we have now, you're looking at thousands of dollars just to get the contractor here. So changing these to LEDs, maybe toning them down a little bit.
They are extremely bright.
Yeah, I think we could tone them down a little bit. And, and still get a nice look and a much less maintenance. Every year, we wind up replacing bulbs and traffic control and bucket trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, great idea, Michael.
We've, we've got quite a bit of budget review ahead of us. And we don't have to make a decision on ARPA right away. But I thought I'd just kind of get ahead of the ball and have that information to you. Judy mentioned the abandoned dog. We're going to try to take care of that.
Good, that, that's terrible.
Yeah.
I don't believe that. So. And, and we did have a sewer backup on Saturday. Kyle and a few other guys went out there. They, it was a, it was a route that was blocking the main line back into Home. I believe it was 12 Warner. So we've got pictures of, of the, of the raw sewers that backed up into the home. And a claim was submitted a day. And we'll wait for a response from the LCT. But the point repair was made pretty quickly on Saturday by the highway crew.
Great.
And I, I think that, you know, everything else is just kind of regular admin duties. Oh, but I did skip the narrative portion, which is kind of big. Our O and M manual, I believe, is, is very close to being complete. And I'm, I'm hoping I'm an email away from, from that being closed out. Excellent. That concludes my manager's report. And you have the, you have the town's balance sheet to date included in your packet. You've got the sheriff's report and Kyle's public works report.
Any questions on anything, show support?
No, just let Kyle know he's doing a really nice job on those.
Yes.
Yes.
Performance reports, very, very true.
Yep. You know, we've had one snowstorm where they plowed. They did a great job on things. As far as I saw, one smooth in my section of town.
I, I have provided, just for transparency reasons, an agreement with A and E for monitoring the pump. It's capped at $2,500, which is well within our maintenance budget. So there's no disagreement to that.
Nothing is pumped up out of the ordinary so far.
Yeah, there seems to be, there seems to be a great deal of confidence around the need of surge protection. So that, that could be what the study shows at the end, after their review. But they, they came, so A and E came here and they took a bunch of plans home with them that were stored in the wellhouse. And they figured out how to log in remotely to our, our pump interface. So they'll be tracking everything remotely.
Good.
Yeah. I hope we're all kinds of confidence in A and E.
Definitely.
They, they're super.
Yeah.
Have been.
I hope our guys can get in on A and E's little, get a little training there on how to log in too.
Yeah. Yeah, they've been down there every time. And even Kyle, who isn't, he is our public works foreman. We've got our water and wastewater guys. But Kyle's been present every time. He makes me make sure I tell him when they're coming down there. So he's making a point to be around.
I like, like his attitude.
Yeah.
All right, anything else under department reports? Is there a motion to go out of the board, select board meeting into the Board of Water Commissioners? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Board of Water Commissioners.
And that's, I, I kind of already did my O and M manual update. You've got the, you've got the email. Got the email. We just, we might have to call the Fire Hydrant out of service down there for a little while until we can make a bigger repair. And, and then it, it's up in the air on whether we have to complete 8B as part of the permit. A lot of, a lot of 8B is just kind of protecting the town from liability. So making sure that that water doesn't infiltrate into the pipes and then go back into people's homes. So again, I think I'm about one email away from the O and M manual being approved.
All right, anything else under the Water Commissioners? Is there a motion to go out of Board of Water Commissioners into the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything under the sewage?
I spoiled that one too. We had a sewer backup.
Way ahead of me, Michael.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners and into the regular select board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any new business? Nothing to add? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.